It says call the order first. We normally do the pledge, but okay, call the order.
Is that the?
Are you gonna do it or I'll do it?
I got it. Uh, Councilmember Holland?
Here.
Councilmember DeGolia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hawkins-Manwellian?
Here.
Mayor Whitmer?
Here. Okay, now it's the pledge to the flag, or the pledge of allegiance. Alright.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, so first we have a couple of presentations. So, the first presentation is the San Mateo County Age Friendly Committee. Are you here? Okay?
Okay.
And give staff a moment to get the presentation up on the screen.
Acknowledge that we have our city attorney in.
Oh, yes, we have our city attorney here today. Or do you want to raise your hand?
Mona. Mona's here in person tonight.
We do later. She does that. It's on my agenda. I'm following your agenda.
After written reports.
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Two.
I don't see the presentation.
Go. Sorry. Sorry for the torturous words.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Whitmer, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, and City Manager Rodericks. My name is Cynthia Nakayama, and I work with the Center for Age Friendly Excellence, or as we like to call ourselves, CAFE. It is a pleasure to be with you this evening to talk about the age-friendly efforts in San Mateo County, and also to provide a further understanding of age-friendly cities and communities. CAFE has worked in partnership with San Mateo County for the last four and a half years. We are very grateful for the current grant that was received from the county to work with eight cities through the end of this year to become age-friendly certified through the AARP. Our vision is to create transformational change toward creating healthy, active, engaged, intergenerational communities that are also sustainable. Um, next slide, please. Thank you. Although age-friendly means friendly for all ages, many cities have infrastructures that are based on working people or families, so they aren't catering toward the older adult population. However, the older adult population is growing very rapidly.
Eleven to four thirty. This is the obituary.
Excuse me?
Am I on? This stupid Karen.
That Francesca needs to, she's, she needs to mute that.
Alright, so we need to mute everybody that's a participant that's out there. Please. Then when we do public comments later, um, they'll raise their hand and then you'll let me know and we'll call them one by one after we do everybody here. Thank you. So I'm sorry for the interruption.
No problem. It's just part of any presentation, I think. So just to provide some history, many years ago, the World Health Organization looked around and they realized that the older adult population was growing older at a very fast rate. So they did a worldwide study to learn about what exactly were the unmet needs of older adults globally. The results of their study resulted in eight main domains or categories where there are consistently unmet needs, including transportation, housing, and social participation. And I will be going through these more in detail later. I think we're a little bit far along already, but um, let's see. And that's fine. The World Health Organization wants to tap the the
Take your time.
Um, I think it was that, um.
Do we need to back up a chart?
Oh, no, we're okay. Um, well, let's see. If you could go to slide two. So, thank you. So, the World Health Organization wants to tap the potential that older people represent for humanity. Their worldwide study led to the founding of the Global Network of Age-Friendly Cities and Communities. We currently work with AARP, the US affiliate of WHO, due to so much that has been happening globally. Next slide, please.
Is that the right one?
Um, just go forward one. Thank you. The Age-Friendly Network was founded in 2005, and today there are fourteen hundred forty-five cities worldwide that are age-friendly in fifty-one countries. In the last several months, Belmont and Milbrae were certified as age-friendly, and we are now working with South San Francisco, East Palo Alto, and Brisbane. Soon, we will also work with San Bruno and Hillsborough, who have voted to move forward with their age-friendly efforts.
Okay, next chart.
San Mateo County Measure K money is funding this process with great thanks to Supervisor Canepa, so there is no cost to any of the cities that we work with, and CAFE does a majority of the heavy lifting during our age-friendly process. Thank you. What does it mean to be age-friendly? It's mainly about commitment and intention to listen and address the needs of older adults so that their voices are heard, and also to share the learnings with other cities and communities. Next slide. By ten, by about twenty thirty, ten thousand US adults um, have been turning sixty-five daily, so that by twenty fifty, at least twenty-two percent of the world's population will be older, older persons, and most will live within the cities. So, in Atherton, this percentage is about twenty-four percent. By Cal, for California, about twenty, by twenty thirty, about one quarter of the state's population will be age sixty and over. This is a growth rate that is larger than any other age group. Because we all grow older from the moment we're born. This is a reality, and no one is immune. The Eight Domains of Livability is an evidence-based framework that is used by cities, counties, states, and countries to create an environment that is livable for both older residents and residents of all ages. Some communities work with all domains at once, and others just focus on a few. So just to go through these a little bit to explain briefly. Outdoor spaces and buildings. People need public places where they can gather, whether this is indoors or outdoors, formal or informal. Transportation is not just about vehicles, but also about mobility. So affordable and accessible transit, as well as safe streets and sidewalks for biking and for walking. Housing is a topic that we're all famili- familiar with. So affordable and available housing at all levels, and vetted repair people who can help with home repair and modifications so that people can age in place. Social participation. So soc- social isolation increased during the COVID pandemic, and it has become even more important to find ways to have social activities, especially with cultural and intergenerational opportunities. Respect and social inclusion. We need to value people of all ages to find ways to decrease the age that is alive and well in our country. Intergenerational activities are one way to do this. Civic participation and employment. This is opportunities for older people to volunteer, which helps them remain active in their community. Communication and information. We need to provide information in a variety of ways. This has become very clear in all of the cities that we've worked with, because despite best efforts, there was never enough distribution of information. Community support and health services. There needs to be affordable medical care and convenience, as well as being able to partner with community organizations to fill the gaps. Next slide. So the town of Atherton has already done a lot in this area. There's age-friendly components of everything you're already doing. I know that the housing element was turned in in January, the update. Um, and all, there's also already been some alternates that have been offered. Uh, I don't know if all of the updates, but this could possibly impact senior housing. Um, there are also capital projects, including the El Camino Real-Selby intersection improvement alternative, neighborhood traffic management, which is very important for streets and safe sidewalks, as well as bike pedestrian master plan, including the middle field bicycle lane improvement. And then you have a lot of resources for the community on your website, including crime prevention, emergency planning, and evaluation, which are excellent. Next slide. So as mentioned, we are working in partnership with San Mateo County using this age-friendly model. We are very fortunate to have been working during the last four and a half years with an excellent county-wide core team that meets on a monthly basis, including representation from the San Mateo County Aging and Adult Services, Peninsula Family Services, San Mateo County Villages, Daily City Aging and Adult Services, Redwood City, Veterans Memorial Senior Center, and of course, the CAFE team. With recommendations from the core team, CAFE organizes an age-friendly task force in each city, and this is the start of the age-friendly process. We also provide them with quantitative data that has been analyzed by San Mateo County. We work with the task force to recruit a diverse and inclusive list of older adult residents to participate in focus groups, and these focus groups are really the heart of what we do. Since we learn about the unmet needs of the older adult residents in that city, we also learn about the city's strengths and some possible solutions. From the report that's generated from these fo- focus groups, the task force brainstorms and then identifies three to five projects to include on an application to AARP that the mayor signs, and then the application is submitted. Some examples of projects include, for instance, San Carlos. They developed a medical equipment loan program based on a program, one hundred-year-old program in Southern California that is very successful, so that they can make recycled medical equipment that is sanitized and available at no cost to lo- local residents. This also helps the landfills, since those aren't dumped. They have also started a monthly public access show started by the villages of San Mateo County called Age-Friendly Beta. Daily City addressed the isolation and communication issue by developing a resource line, TV displays, and Wi-Fi provision at city facilities, also virtual in-person and hybrid, older adult events, and many others. As you can see, this is an initial five-year commitment. Certification re- reflects the city's commitment to listen to and address the needs of their aging population. Within two years of certification, an action plan is required. This is an active rather than a static document, so that revisions and amendments are considered to be signs of improvement and progress. There also needs to be methods of measurement and tracking. And the AARP website has examples of these action plans. You can hire CAFE to do this work, work with city staff, or have an age-friendly subcommittee work on this. Next slide. Many people don't realize that there are many benefits to becoming an age-friendly city. When asked whether it is more economically beneficial to attract or maintain working adults versus older adults, most people would answer incorrectly. They would say working adults. However, two greater Kansas studies have shown that it is better to attract and maintain older adults. They contribute more to the regional GDP than any other age group. Uh, they have more disposable income and can spend it at any time during the day. Social capital. There's a creation of community, so there's opportunities for intergenerational relationships, empowering older persons. Infrastructure innovations. Atherton always, already has beneficial projects in process, because knowing the city's needs is more efficient in creating the budgets to asr- to address those cities' needs. And then, of course, healthy communities are generated, since it supports the roles of community agencies, since there is now up-to-date data for local authorities. For instance, this increases the city's ability to make informed public health decisions, which improves the quality of life for all. Next slide. So, I'll just briefly go over the age-friendly gathering that we had on Monday. It was successful in that we had thirteen cities attend and also several coastal towns, so that there were over fifty-five people, and they enjoyed having the opportunity to meet, meet each other, share experiences about their age-friendly journey, share successes and ideas, and they're looking forward to the next one. Next slide. So at this point, we normally ask for the city's support and also recommendations for focus groups. We, I didn't want to assume that the vote would come out positive, so um, just wanted to let you know, um, what we normally do at this point. And um, once we complete our process, we continue to move forward and ask for your support and leadership in this area. So just to wrap up, an age-friendly city is an inclusive and accessible urban and rural environment that promotes active aging. And the next slide. And our mission to, is to advance transformational change to create vibrant, sustainable, supportive, and inclusive communities for all generations. We need to increase the awareness of the needs of older adults. Governor Newsom's master plan on aging recognizes that California's over sixty-five population is projected to grow to eight point six million by twenty thirty, and he encourages all cities to become age-friendly. None of us is immune to aging, and the grant is already here for you to work on this. CAFE does ninety percent of the work. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
No, thank you.
What?
I just said, thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it. And uh, if there is um, something you want us to specifically sign, please get that to George and we'll get that to you.
All right.
Okay. Great, thanks. Okay, next, uh, this is recognition of National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and so we have the chief to read a proclamation. Didn't you get your pack?
Give it to you.
We've got it.
But you can give us a summary.
Yeah.
Guess there was an internal issue today.
Clearly. Hey, Councilman, Mr. Rodericks, uh, I'm pleased to read the proclamation, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to do this officially. Uh, in recognition of National Police Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week, it's May fourteenth through May twentieth. Whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. The calendar week in which May fifteenth falls is recognized as National Police Weekend, whereas candlelight vigil is traditionally held on May thirteenth. Regardless of the day of the week in which it falls, National Police Officer Memorial Day service is hosted by Fraternal Order of Police and Fraternal Order of the Police Auxiliary. And whereas, the Town Council and the community of the town of Atherton would like to honor the men and women of law enforcement for their never-ending commitment to protection of life and property. And whereas the Town Council would like to honor those eight fallen officers in California who lost their lives in the line of duty in twenty twenty-two. Officer Tyler Ryan Leenhan, Officer Nicholas Vella, Correctional Lieutenant Steve Taylor, Officer Jorge Dave Albreto, Officer Houston Ryan Tipping, Corporal Michael Paredes, Officer Joseph Santana, Deputy Isaiah Corredo, and one from past also honored is Michael Wall. Now, therefore, as Mayor of the Town Council of Atherton, and on behalf of the Atherton City Council, do hereby proclaim that the week of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, is recognized as National Officer Police Week. Remember those officers who did pay the ultimate price with their lives while serving and protecting the citizens of California. Uh, first part of May will be doing the same ceremony for those officers that lost their life in the county of San Mateo. They'll be doing the same at State Capitol in San Mateo. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, now we're on public comments. We have a lot of people here and plus online, so we're going to limit the public comments to two minutes. Please pay attention, uh, we'll let you know what that is. Um, also, with regards to public comments now and later, these are for public comments that are not included in the pack today. You'll get a chance to comment on those later. You cannot delegate your time to somebody else, and you can only speak once. So, do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda? Yes, come on, please. Carol. And please, uh, state your name and the area in which you live, not just Atherton.
Carol Flaherty, I live at Comino Porlos, Arbe Luce, and I have a house under construction on Adam Way. I sent you all a letter last night. Sorry you came late, but it's because the court just ruled. So as you know, the Ninth Circuit Court has now ruled that the ban on gas that Berkeley has is invalid and unenforceable.
Yep.
I think this means that we have to look at the gas ban for ADUs here in Atherton. I hope you're gonna do it faster as opposed to later, because I'm filing next week to put gas at our new ADU. I hope the city attorney reads the ruling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am sure Mona will get right on it. Yes, and we saw the letter in the Wall Street Journal, and I forwarded it to George before you did, so no problem.
You can't beat him.
Okay, any other comments? Any online? Okay, I'm going to close this section of public comments. Now, we have uh, departmental written reports. Are there any questions for George with regards to those department or from the council? Yeah, go ahead, George, or Rick.
Um, three quick things, George. Number one, on the this current fiscal year capital projects update, one of the capital projects that you identify is uh, the crosswalk at Fair Oaks Lane and Lloyd. And um, you said that that design is completed, it's been reviewed by Bike Ped Committee. When is it coming to the council?
A conceptual design, I believe, right, Robert? Not final design, so that's gotta move from Bike Ped to transportation, or is it going directly to council for plans and specs?
We weren't planning on being able to transport, so we can't just walk over and move forward with the design.
For plans and specs. So, question to the council, do you want it to go to the Transportation Committee as well before it hits the council, or not?
Well, since you tried to put the Bike Committee underneath the Transportation Committee for reasons that the bikes ride on the roads, then I would think that it would be appropriate for them to see it, unless you feel that it's gonna unduly detain and delay this project. I wait for your input.
Yeah, I'll weigh in on that. I, I, I don't know when transportation meets, but I think we have a situation at that corner, which needs attention. There's not a crosswalk. There needs to be a crosswalk. People need to be able to be safe in crossing Fair Oaks there, and given that the town center is now fully operational, we need that. So I think there's urgency to getting that.
Go ahead without that. I'm not sure. We really need Bike and Ped either, but okay, it's your choice.
Through the, through the mayor. We've had a little uh, difficulty getting a quorum for the Transportation Committee to meet the last couple of times, so I'm, hope that we give them enough notice so that we can have.
Oh, Bike Ped or Transportation?
So, but I don't think the Bike Ped was invited.
I think what I'm hearing, though, is given the urgency of that particular project.
Just move forward.
We can have staff move forward with preparation of the final design, plans, and specs, and then move that to the city council.
Right, yes.
That would be fine.
I think that's right.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, also, on the um, the current fiscal year capital projects, you identified a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar parking lot repair. Uh, but I'm not exactly clear. I- is that the parking lot where the temporary staff buildings were in the park, and, and that's not being addressed in the circulation plan?
No, that was in addition to it, so we had budgeted for them both.
See, and when is that? That hasn't started, I see that, but when's that coming to us? Because it would make sense to me to try to get that done at the same time as the circulation plan, which I know is coming to us.
It'll either be done at the same time as the circulation plan, or at the same time we do streets and roads projects where we have that a similar type contractor.
Okay.
Alright.
Fi- final comment on your report. Um, you rec- you included a new section titled Summary of ADUs, JDUs, and Single Family Residences, which I think is a really excellent summary and particularly relevant to anybody that's looking at housing in Atherton and what we're doing with ADUs, because this identifies every ADU application uh, permit, permitted applications and final applications. It's not the individual applications, it's just a monthly summary of how many there were, and how many there have been is extremely relevant to us in the course of our assertion with the state of California, because they don't seem to like to recognize that we have as many as we have. And um, and I, so I think this is a particularly important and good table. I, I thank you for preparing it. Um, it includes the first three months of twenty twenty-three. I would, and, and I think the information is very relevant for both twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, since the state looks back at what we've done, so I want to encourage you to have staff fill out the full monthly reports for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, so we can look at a, at the graphical picture of all of the ADUs and JDUs and single-family residents that have been permitted and final and so on and so forth, as identified in the table, but over the time.
Maybe you could do that on a quarterly basis as opposed to monthly. He was, he was asking you for you to do month.
Saying at some point, give us the historic data for the last two years.
Yeah, that's.
He's gonna be updating this every month in our report.
Right, I understand that. I thought it was a good report as well.
Annual ABR report that you approved in March or February that went to the state. Yep, we can just put that in.
Okay, it'd just be good to look at it for the months over the years.
Anything else?
That's it.
Through the mayor, I have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
From what Rick was saying, um, because i- in that chart, you see in twenty twenty-two, there were fifty-three entitled ADUs. But in January, February, March, you know, the rollover uh, looks like there was only eight of those fifty-three. So, do we have more in the pipeline that are um, moving along, entitled, and then uh, permitted? How many of those fifty-three that were entitled do you think are going to be final, I guess, in twenty twenty-three?
Uh, well, entitled is somebody going through the planning process, so they're in the early stages of conceptual design and plans, submitting and review for planning. Usually, they're part of a larger project, so the ones that are actually permitted have completed that process, made it to the building department, and are getting their building permit uh, for construction, probably close, as I said, as part of a larger project. The ADU is just a secondary part of it. The ones that are actually final are probably from projects that are two or three years old.
Right, okay.
So there's a.
For twenty twenty-two, there was only seventeen, so we're not meeting our mark there for sure.
And that's why I'm.
We're estimating thirty-five.
And that's why he's, he's asking for the historical data, so you can see what Mike carried for.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience would like to discuss anything that was in the departmental reports? Seeing none? Uh, okay, we will then move on. I don't think we need to approve them. Um, okay, we had a closed session this morning, or this afternoon, and Mona, would you like to give the report?
Thank you, Mayor Whitmer. There are two items on closed session. There was no public comment before the council adjourned, and the council provided direction on both items.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're into consent, the consent calendar. There are items one through five. Does any council member wish to pull any of those? There are items one through five. Does any council member wish to pull any of those? Okay, any people in the audience like to pull those or people that are online? Okay, none here, nothing online, okay? Then can I have a a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay. We're not, we're all here, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next.
It was approved unanimously for those online?
Yes. Now we're going to the public hearing, which is items six through seven. The first one is waive the first reading and introduction by title of an ordinance amending Municipal Code Chapter eight dot sixteen to ban gas-powered leaf blowers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, assuming there's no appeal or order of appeal or state law or court case to overturn, the state is banning the sale of gas-powered small engines beginning January one of twenty twenty-four. Uh so the council at the last meeting directed that staff craft an ordinance to ban the use of gas-powered leaf blowers for like beginning July one of twenty twenty-four. That's what the attached ordinance does. It's associated with the noise ordinance, and so it bans the use of gas-powered leaf blowers beginning July one, twenty twenty-four. In addition, the council asked for staff to put together uh incentive or rebate program or make a suggestion for one. And so that's included in the staff report uh for the council's feedback. And we would recommend that we include twenty-five thousand dollars within the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget uh to provide a rebate of up to two hundred and fifty dollars per resident. The current state rebates are geared toward commercial landscapers, not residential, so the towns program would be geared toward the residential side. And residents can use that uh rebate program for their own use, or they could make a purchase on behalf of their gardener, totally up to them. Uh and once, once the council approves the the budget inclusion, we'd begin drafting flyers and incentive information and and social media to put that out to the community and make them aware of it. With that staff reports concluded, it's recommended, as the mayor indicated, that you waive for the reading and introduce for first reading the ordinance to ban the use of gas-powered leaf blowers beginning July one, twenty twenty-four.
Are there any questions on this in council? Okay, any questions on this from the audience, both online as well as in person? Seeing none, we'll close that and then uh we'll have council comments and then we vote. Any comments? My only comment is during the discussion on this, there was the discussion that, since this is a part of the noise ordinance that and there was an issue with seventy-five dB that perhaps we should in a future date relook at the seventy-five dB for ten to twelve on weekends. Anyway, that's my comment. Do we have a motion to approve? Sure, you, yeah, I said, anybody have a comment?
Uh I think, speaking, following up on what you said, I think that we should also have the dB levels, which many of the other ordinance in other cities have. So you're saying, because the point was made by some of our environmental programs, with some of the electric blowers are also loud, so we should ban uh based on gas, but also dB level or include a dB level in the ordinance if possible.
Uh we'd have to get a report from the staff on that, so we can look at that.
And we would have amended, I mean, you could introduce it this evening, we could come back and look at that again.
Yeah.
No, I think we should pass this, so that we can always come back and adjust it. Let's go ahead and pass it, okay?
I'd like to make a motion to um pass the ordinance um of the city council uh for the um banning of the uh gas-powered leaf blowers uh beginning July first, twenty twenty-four.
So a point of clarification, I'm sorry, this is, we're waiving the first reading and introducing by title only, we're not actually.
Oh, this is the first reading, okay, all right. So make a motion to waive the first.
Do we have a second on it?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Since this is a public hearing, we need a roll call, please.
Okay, maybe we have the roll call. Sorry.
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember De Colia?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here, aye.
Vice Mayor Hawkins-Manwillian?
Yes.
Mayor Whitmer.
Yes, okay, and we'll move on to the next one.
I'll just pass it.
Review the request to review the proposal for a tentative map and conditional exception to allow the subdivision of two point five acres of a lot into two acres with non-conforming lot widths less than the required one hundred and seventy-five feet at forty-three Santiago.
Hi, my name is uh Radha Higgy. I'm the senior planner. I will start presenting this project to the Planning Commission on March twenty-second. Uh the Planning Commissioners reviewed the project for the conditional exception of this uh two point five acre lot on forty-three Santiago with the conditional exception for a reduced lot width. The Planning Commissioners uh recommended approval uh recommended that the city council approve this conditional exception. They voted for one. Uh the commissioners deliberated extensively about the conditions and the requirement that they needed to find to make this exception an approvable exception, including uh the topography, the the size of the lot, the locations, and uh what was the neighborhood character and other uh requirements that they needed to make the finding. And we present to you their recommendation for approving the exception for this lot width. And um that is also the staff's recommendation to the council members tonight to um grant the forty-three Santiago conditional exception, the reduced lot width uh of the required lot width is one seventy-five feet. Both the lots don't meet the required widths, but they meet every other aspect of the development standards for R one A in this neighborhood. And um that is my presentation to the council members. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Yeah, well, well, I'm sure we're going to, so.
Yes.
Do we have any questions from the council?
I have no questions.
Okay, I have a question. So is the intent of the developer to maintain the proper setbacks on the two sides that go against other people's property and just infringe on the one that's between the two houses that they're planning on building? Or are they just gonna equally put it on both sides?
We have a preliminary conceptual development plan of what they plan to build. They will be required to maintain all development standards of R one A, and those are calculated uh with respect to the lot width itself. And they are showing that they maintain that in each individual lot, they are uh central aligning the development. However, tonight's discussion is only for the map and the reduced lot width, which would result in a substandard lot width for each resultant lot. And they are required to follow all the development standards for those new lots created.
But if we're we're great, go ahead.
So that make, that raises a question. My understanding was that this uh matter was only to adjust the street-facing portion of the parcels, because the street-facing portion of the parcels will be, I don't know, something like three hundred and fifteen feet each, rather than three hundred and or or a hundred.
Hundred seventy-six.
There'll be less than a hundred and seventy-five feet each.
That's correct.
And it doesn't have anything to do with the setback.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's all we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, the second question is did they discuss with you the opportunity for doing a flag lot?
Um they did not come with the opportunity for flag lot creation, because the length of the the parcel, the way it's located is the majority, the three hundred and forty-one feet of the two two-point acre lot is sitting along Santiago Avenue.
Okay.
And along the entire length, so this would be the most uh simplest way to subdivide the lot. They came with a subdivision project. Not for the flag lot for, I'm sorry, they came with the two rectangular divisions of the lot, yeah.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the audience?
I think you need to give the applicant the opportunity to speak.
Brad, do you want to, or Steve?
Sean Lopez. Good evening, city council members. My name is Sean Lopes. I'm representing Pacific Peninsula Group tonight. Um I'd like to discuss our conditional exception exhibits, which we have on the screen here, which best illustrate how our subdivision proposal meets the characteristics and will fit into the fabric of the uh the town. So as you can see here, we have a large two point five acre lot uh with a street frontage on Santiago of three hundred and fifteen feet by approximately, you know, three hundred and forty feet deep. Uh the proposed subdivision bisects the lot in half. Uh we believe that this works best on the property, given the proportions of the lot, and also with the existing homes sitting in the center of the lot. This creates the best use for the tree protection zones for both properties, as it clears the center of the lot, allowing us to develop on both sides of the property. As part of our uh subdivision proposal, we did an extensive study throughout the town of Atherton on our one A lots uh west of El Camino. As you can see here, highlighted in yellow, these are all the lots that are non-conforming due to width throughout the town of Atherton, which represents about three hundred and twelve properties or twenty-two point six percent of of the town. Given that our lots do not meet the width standard, but more than double the the depth standard includes a one point three and one point two acre lot. Um we've also done some studies on the neighborhood as well and noticed that uh Park Lane on two-two-seven Park Lane and across the way on fifty Santiago, there are two non-conforming width lots directly adjacent to the property, as well as one further down Santiago on ninety-eight. A little bit of history for the subdivision there. This was the original subdivision. And as you can see, this is the last, one of the last two remaining lots that have not been subdivided in the area, um including two-two-six or two-six-six Park Lane. Um furthermore, the property of forty-three Santiago is identified in the housing element update as underutilized. So we believe that this directly responds to that as well. Any other questions?
Yeah, my understanding from the city manager is many of those lots that you identified as non-conforming were non-conforming before we passed all of our rules, so it's, I think it's kind of unfair to pass that subjugation. And uh I guess what we don't want to do, or at least me, I don't want to create a precedence where we're just going to do lot after lot after lot, because I'm sure there are other ones like this where we could do that. So this is a one-time variance as far as I'm concerned. Did you want to speak to that?
Well, I I, you know, I really think that this uh lot split makes a lot of sense. I'm very in supportive of it. I did feel that it was a little disingenuous to list all of the uh non-conforming widths um that had really have no bearing on what the current um zoning codes are now. I mean, they were split, you know, nineteen twenty-six, you know, I live on one of them, you know, and so uh you know, uh it's true, there are a lot of non-conforming lots. Um but those are also smaller lots, you know, they're not one acre lots like this is. So anyway, I I think it's a um a good use of the property. I think it will be uh uh well done, and it fits well in the neighborhood, so I'm in support of it.
Yeah, I I agree. We need the houses built, and they're gonna, I've I've been told that they're gonna have ADUs, so I mean, I'm in favor of it. I just don't want this to be a precedent.
So um Rick.
Rick, go ahead.
I don't, I think the, I don't think it's disingenuous to identify the non-conforming lots, but I frankly don't think it's particularly relevant. I think what's really relevant here is that we've got a two point five acre lot with three hundred and fifteen feet uh at the free street frontage, and we've got an ordinance that requires a hundred and seventy-five feet street frontage. I think we need to look at that ordinance and change that ordinance. I think that with with a two hun- two and a half acre lot that's being split into one point two and one point three acres, that's exactly what we this town, that we want to encourage people to build more housing so we can satisfy our housing element without getting into this ridiculous notion of building apartments or sub-appartments. And this is exactly what we need to do. So in fact, I think that we do need to change the code, and we need to allow for people to subdivide these two and a half or three acre lots where they're not going to have a hundred and seventy-five feet street frontage. We know there's plenty of lots in Atherton that don't have a hundred and seventy-five foot uh street frontage, but are more than an acre. So this is a good thing to do. I I I'm a hundred percent in support of it, and I think that we need to ask staff to take a look at the ordinance and come back. Planning staff can give us a recommendation on how to change that ordinance, so it makes sense for us, but um I I I don't, I don't think we just need to do it as a one-off, and I don't want to do a whole series of one-offs. I'd like to look at the code in general.
I agree with changing the code, if that's what we think that we was nespend, so hopefully you can bring that forward on a later meeting. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience?
Thank you for your time.
No problem. Okay, we'll bring it back. Um can we have a motion on this?
I'll I'll move to approve.
Okay. So we're going to vote on waiving the first, oh, excuse me, waiving or approving the request to review the proposal for the tentative map and the conditions um exception to allow the subdivision of the two and a half acre lot into two lots with non-conforming lot widths.
And make the findings required under CECL as well, proving the rights of exemption.
Right. So can we have our roll call vote?
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember De Colia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hawkins-Manwillian?
Yes.
Mayor Whitmer.
Yes. Okay. Now we're moving on to the uh regular agenda. Um and the first one, number eight, is the one I assume that why most most people are here. Um if you attended the last meeting that we had on March fifteenth, former mayor Louis and myself presented some ideas after going through the Housing Coalition's letter as to what might be appropriate. Then from there, we were tasked by a member of the council who had brought forward some criteria uh a number of months ago to say, well, how does this apply to the uh standards that were presented to the council at that time, so former mayor Louis is going to make the presentation, so I'll turn the microphone over to her.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, mayor. Um well, it's really good to see you all here tonight. I, you know, I know why you're here. Uh it's a little scary, I think, to get uh things in the email that uh are not completely um I guess uh exactly what you want to hear, but I thank you for coming. And did you know that this year, twenty twenty-three, is Atherton's one hundredth birthday? One hundred years ago, in September nineteen twenty-three, Atherton was incorporated. Um and the town is uh planning a really big celebration in September, and y'all all are invited to come on September twenty-fourth. We're gonna hold it here. Uh we're planning a really big celebration, so it's a deal. Uh but can you imagine what Atherton was like a hundred years ago? I mean, we're talking about um an acre here, an acre there, but you know, at that time, I'm just gonna digress just a little bit before we get into the criteria, because kind of look back a little bit on, you know, how did we get to where we are in Atherton? Um most of the land uh a hundred years ago had already been settled in the eighteen hundreds by obviously, everybody knows, successful businessmen from San Francisco who wanted to escape the cold and foggy summers. And um our founding father, Atherton, uh Fax and Dean Atherton had always said, there's landed estates down there where you can build a home and educate your children, because there were schools. Um he purchased six hundred acres, everyone knows, bordered by Alameda, Dallas, Polkis, El Camino, Valparaiso, and um uh it was called Valparaiso Park. And he gifted the land for Sacred Heart, many, many acres, and gifted the circus club land. He had his estate home on called Fair Oaks, and it was a large working farm. A lot of these large estates, as you know, were large working farms uh as well as grand estates, another well-known San Franc. as well as grand estates. Another well-known San Francisco everyone knows is Thomas Selby. He was mayor of San Francisco for a while and he purchased the 420 acres along Selby Lane and El Camino and the Alameda. So, I mean, Atherton Avenue. And on that property, he built a grand house and he planted almond orchards and created a working farm producing up to 10,000 bushels of grain and 2,000 bushels of fruit every year, making it the largest orchard farm in San Mateo County. And it was called Almond Drawl because of the almond orchards. Because of that, a lot of many skilled farm workers and staff were hired to tend these large farms, these estates, these landed estates. And some people think that those skilled workers settled in this area around the town center in the smaller lots. And so in the 1920s, the times changed because time brings change. And the Selby heirs began to subdivide their large plot of Almond Drawl Farm. And at that time, everybody was saying, oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness, the time of the grand estates in the 1900, 19th century is going to disappear when these large estates subdivided. And for sure, change had come. And because the subdivision of these estates happened, began to happen over and over throughout Atherton during the early 1900s. Like the Flood Estate, everyone knows, was subdivided into 480 homes in the 1930s, creating the gated community of Lindenwood. Not without controversy, the Donahoe Estate, known as Home Grove, became the site of Menlo-Atherton High School. Again, development, not the landed grand estate and farm. It is thought that the subdividing of these large estates in the 20s into minimum of one acre sites was to preserve the rural nature of the community. But it was also probably to allow for the new homeowners in the 1920s a way to have room to plant fruit trees and gardens to grow vegetables for their families. And it is also probably an easy way to parcel out the acreage, a one acre lot. But it wasn't until after around 1945, after World War II, that the biggest transformation and the fastest growth of Atherton occurred. The population of Atherton grew by more than 5,000 people from 2,500 in 1945 to 7,700 in 1960. And that was hard on Atherton, on the growth, on the city, on how to manage that growth. Today, we are 100 years later and we are under tremendous pressure from the state of California to, as they say, quote, "do our share" to address the severe housing shortage by building 348 new housing units. Our last housing cycle, eight years ago, they assigned 91 housing units to be built or to be planned to be built over the eight-year cycle. Now it's 348. It's a monumental task. To date, we've submitted two proposals to the HCD, Housing Community Development Department of the state of California, and both have been rejected. And there are new laws and ordinances that have been passed through the state. I think 150 of them are something that we have to address. And we need to do a really, really good job this time around of addressing those questions and telling our story of how we got here, why Atherton is special, what, why we have these acre lots and more. Both of our plans included proposals for building ADUs, JADUs in lot splits. As Councilmember DeGoya indicated, you know, we need to take some of these larger lots, the two to three to four, five, and make them maybe an acre and build housing and ADUs. But that will change our character in a way because it's not the landed estates anymore. Just like when Thomas Selby's heirs subdivided Almond Drawl and the streets of Tuscaloosa and Austin appeared and heretofore had never been noted. It was change. It was change. However, we, your elected officials, are trying our best to figure out how to make the Housing Community Development Department approve a plan without ruining our rural character. And we need to express and explain and convince them of the specialness of Atherton while telling our story and hopefully succeeding in reducing their expectations of us and also embracing the fact that we are this special community. We need everyone's help. It's not an easy task. Last month, as the mayor indicated, the council said we needed to come up with a list of criteria to help guide some decision-making process in the potential of identifying multi-unit development to meet HCD's demand. You have to understand that just because it's identified, residents do not have to move. It is not eminent domain. The town is not taking over your property or anything like that. It's you have control and maintain control. Anyway, Mayor Whitmer and I, along with the advice and guidance from staff, prepared a draft criteria document for discussion and input from the other council members and for discussion and input from you, the public. I want to be perfectly clear that you understand that no decision and no policy has been made, no formal recommendation to approve these lists of criteria have been made by the ad hoc committee. It is a discussion, talking point document, and I want you to understand that. And so with your permission, Mayor, I would like to take each criteria item that's on the slide, one at a time, for discussion by the council and then open it up to the public for comments.
Yeah, so let me just comment before you do that. So what we're going to do is go through all criteria and hear from the council first because some of these are going to change. And so then from there, after we get all, all eight done, which of course, for something, it says at the bottom, six of eight have to be there for something to be approved. Then we will take the public comments. Okay, so go ahead, Elizabeth. Oh, yes, Stacy.
Before we start that, I think it might be helpful for George to explain what our process will look like for our next housing element submission because I think there we have to, there's like a lot of steps before our next draft and I think a lot of people are feeling like we're rushing and there's, there's not, there's a lot of steps. So maybe George can explain that before we start talking through, if that's okay.
Can certainly do that. So the, as you know, the town received its letter from HCD on April 4th. So staff, planning staff is taking the opportunity to go through that letter, paragraph by paragraph, item by item, and work up not only what each comment means, but also what the next steps would be around it, where the town would need to go, how we would need to address it, what those milestones of timelines look like. We adopted our housing element in January, but we didn't go through all of the CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, steps that are required for that as well. So we're taking the time to do that as well. That process is a good three to six months. It starts with some internal analysis by some consultant staff. And then that whole process involves a series of public meetings over that six-month period of time to gather community engagement and input. We also are concurrently working on, as you approved this evening, we'll be working on the inclusionary ordinance part of the housing element. That will also go through a public process. We are working on the objective design standards. That will go through a public process. And we're working on some land use amendments and changes that are, that evolved from all of those that too will go through a public process. And that entire process is probably going to be four to six months long before we turn around a new submission to the state with any potential modifications the council may make over that same six-month period of time.
Right. And then also, I've had a lot of emails about builders remedy and what these people have to go through to build a builder's remedy besides just submitting. They have to do a CEQA analysis, et cetera.
That's, that's correct. They do have to go through CEQA. They have to provide the 20% set aside for affordable housing and any project that they propose. And they have to go through that environmental review process before the town would approve it. And, and you do have an opportunity to provide comment during that period of time and public comment during that period of time.
Okay. So I see it's up on the board and Elizabeth's going to lead us through it, but perhaps we could enlarge it so people might be able to read it. Possible.
It's going to be hard, I think.
Yeah. Good.
Okay. So am I on?
Yeah, you're on.
I'm on, okay. So there's a preamble that, you know, talks about our struggles and the overarching goal is to try and maintain the core of Atherton's rural character with minimal impact on neighboring homes and environment while locating the multifamily developments in optimal, optimum areas. While this appears impossible, council believes that with the proper setbacks, height limitations, density, landscape screening, and ingress egress policies, this goal can be achieved.
And by the way, these goals will be based on somebody wanting to build, not for us to decide, oh, we're going to build it here. Okay. So you want to say something, George? Go ahead. Okay.
It says if a property meets at least two-thirds, I would basically like to say, you know, take, yeah, six of eight. Or, you know, all of eight, whatever it is that the council or, you know, we ultimately decide. But I think the two-thirds is not a, a proper formula. It would be considered for inclusion in the housing element. So the first one is if it is within one-half mile of a multimodal transit route along one of the town's major or minor arterials as identified in the town's general plan, such as El Camino Real, I might say that El Camino Real is the only major arterial that is in our town. The other ones, Alameda, Marsh, Middlefield, Ravenswood, and or Valparaiso are what they call minor arterials. So, so discussion on that. I know that the rationale, we were advised a half a mile was consistent with the state's transit guidelines, George?
What the state considers to be transit-oriented development. And there's a part of those 150 new laws or so that the state adopted. One of those imposes on local jurisdictions a prohibition from parking standards from certain types of development within that half mile from transit. So those are, it was just tossed out as a standard that the state uses. The council can amend it. The council can make it less, more, whatever you'd like to do.
So just that particular little portion of that criteria, I think, needs some refinement discussion. I think after we really looked at it on the big map. Rod, I mean, you guys, you know, you're right. And so it's, it's just, it's kind of an insane metric.
So why don't we take some comments? I have some, but everybody else can go first. Yeah, go ahead.
When they talk about qualifying with the state for mass transit, some of the streets here are really small streets and they have very little actual transit on them. They maybe have routes to schools and stuff. Does the state have criteria by which they would count these? Would anything beyond El Camino actually count as real transportation?
Well, the streets that are identified up there, as Councilmember Lewis articulated, are the town's major and minor arterials. Those are the only ones that were being considered. None of those smaller streets are considered transit streets. So the way the state looks at it is it's a half a mile from a transit corridor, which is what those streets could qualify as, although not all of them have consistently commuter traffic transit. Some of them just have school transit, which is in the morning and the afternoon, but they do still have transit and bus stops.
That's exactly what I was trying to tease out. When you're going to the minor ones here and it's only a school bus that goes at 3 o'clock, that hardly qualifies by man transit corridor. So I'm just wondering how the state defines it, if they would include any of these or just El Camino.
Well, they would, they would include all of them.
Include them all.
Well, and, and one of the reasons you would look at a school route, for example, if you're looking at affordable housing where people may not have multiple vehicles, they have kids, they're small families, school routes become very important.
However, as we discussed last time, the minor arterials are essentially one lane on each side. So El Camino was the only multi-lane street.
Multimodal.
Multi-modal, sorry.
Multimodal.
Okay, thank you for the correction. Okay. So the other ones are small and like, like we talked about it last time, Valparaiso is very congested, especially before and after school time. So you know, we may want to look at that. We may want to look at the the distance from the, from the center of the road. So.
The other comments. Rick?
Oh, yeah, I've got a comment. I, I understand that the half mile was picked because there's some parking regulations that the state has passed that have to do within a half mile of certain, did you call it transit corridors?
The state uses the half mile of transit as a measurement in a, in a number of different laws.
But is this a half mile from bus routes? I know that what, what, what we've looked at in the past are the train and bus routes. And the only major bus route that I'm aware of goes down El Camino Real.
Yeah, the rest are school routes. But may the city attorney have a comment?
Yeah, the legislature adopted Assembly Bill 2097, which prohibits public agencies from enforcing parking requirements on residential and commercial developments that are situated along high tran, uh, high transit corridors. And I believe that includes, there's a definition, but for example, anything that is within 15 minutes of a high pri, high priority transit. So if you have a bus that comes at a designated stop every 15 minutes, that would qualify.
And that was.
So that's El Camino, yes. And, okay. So, so I would say on, on this item, there's two things that I, I don't understand why we have major and minor. We should just have major. That's where the transit corridor is because that's the bus route. The other, maybe there's school buses. I know there's school buses that go along Alameda and there probably are school buses that go on Ensonal. But I, I think it's irrelevant to this issue and I, I would both change the half mile, which is seems excessive to me to a quarter mile. And I'd limit it to the major arterial.
Yep. I agree. Any comments?
I agree with that.
Any comments?
I think, I mean, I think at this point, that seems fine. I also feel like we should keep a lot of options on the table for when we have actual conversations about all of this. So I think the core, I think I agree the half mile is, is huge. And so I think a quarter mile makes sense. I think El Camino, of course, makes the most sense out of all of them. I'm just feel like we should have everything on the table for when we really get serious about talking about all this personally.
Okay, can you then modify this document as we go through it, George?
Okay, can you then modify this document as we go through it, George? Okay, because it would be then a quarter mile. And then with parentheses, half mile question mark.
I think a quarter mile and then you delete the words or minor. In front of arterial and you delete Alameda, Dallas, Polgus, Marsh Road, Middlefield, Ravenswood, and or Valparaiso from the rest of the sentence. All right, the next criteria is that it would be adjacent to or across from. Existing or planned commercial or retail development such as restaurants, stores, service industry. And businesses. And the, I believe, the thought behind that is that, and it's. That any multifamily or cause a higher density. You would want to have it closer to amenities and not. So that it's it's walkable and. It's not across from a single family home.
Any comments on that one from the council? Yeah, I do. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, two two things. One is, I I think you need to be clear that across means across the street from. And I don't know why we're talking about plan. There's all kinds of planning. So plan could be anything. I mean. Depends who you're talking to in terms of what's planned. I would take or planned out to deal with existing.
I I was asking, would it, what if it's zoned, zoned for commercial?
I think.
And it's not existing, but it.
I think Rick's comment is it's got to be there already.
I I disagree with that. Because development takes some time.
But I believe that's what you're saying. Is that not correct?
Yeah, no, I I I mean, what is the, the purpose of this is to establish criteria for looking at where. We may want to change zoning. So. The idea of a zoning change because there might be. Some future development doesn't make any sense to me. A zoning change because there's an existing area, right, where that. Property would i- is up for rezoning, that makes more sense to me, but. Anything can be planned and anything can happen in the future. So I think it deals with what's there. And and as things change, as property changes, then then you can reconsider.
I agree. You look at our neighbors, they planned a lot of stuff that never came to pass or came to pass years later.
I agree that as planned is the wrong word, but I think Elizabeth's also right when she says things are zoned. The goal of this and the next item is to say that we're gonna, when we look forward to where we're going to develop. We're going to develop to something that's already developed or already zoned to be developed. So I think the word zoned is correct. So if you have something that's zoned to be to be commercial, now that we do. But zoned to be dense, that even though it's not currently built to be dense, it would be on the table. So it's either, but I agree with what Rick is saying. Few, you can't do for future, but you're defining what's actually current. It's just a different semantics. It's what is zoned for and what is actually built for are two different things, or maybe.
That can be discussed more.
Is there like an actual difference between what's zoned and what's. Existing from your knowledge, like are there areas that we don't know about that are secretly zoned for commercial that are adjacent to? That isn't already developed, I guess.
There could be something that is zoned retail, but currently in it as is a legal nonconforming use. Such as a church or something else. And over time that goes away and then retail ends up being there, but it's zoned retail. But the current use, the existing thing that's across the street is a church.
So we may be talking about commercial that's not in Atherton. So if you're sitting across. Commercial development, if you're across the street from from that, that's that would fall in this.
Atherton properties.
This isn't a theoretical discussion. We're talking about Atherton. It's this little town. We know every street in this town. We know exactly what the zoning is and we know that zoning is across. So we're, so there's no commercial or retail zoning in that. Number one. Number two, then if you're going to look for commercial or retail zoning that is. Adjacent to or across the street from, then you've got to be talking about something. Atherton property that's adjacent to Redwood City, Menlo Park or County. And we know exactly what Atherton properties are. Adjacent to or across the street from Menlo or Redwood City and County. I can't think of any of those properties that are zoned for retail and commercial and aren't retail and commercial. That are in fact residential. So it's irrelevant. This is a theoretical discussion.
Not really, I can, sorry. It's the point of what this whole thing is, is to say if we look at our community and we're going to look forward and we're forced to develop. Where would we develop? We're going to develop based on rational criteria of what's already there. So if it's already dense. And the areas where it's already dense, that's where you're going to look first.
That's that's existing.
Underlying principle, the only, everyone agreed with you about plan, you're right, future. But if something happens to be zoned, it's existing.
So I worry about you're including the word zone here. Is it then the county decides to rezone the street. Across from. Alameda, which is, which where where it's county property in Atherton on one side. Let's say, I mean, they're, everybody, every jurisdiction is going through the same exercise we're going through and they decide to rezone it. I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to change what's going to happen to Atherton because of some change that happens in the future. By some other jurisdiction. I if if a change occurs because another jurisdiction makes a change in the future, we can reconsider ours. But for right now, I I wouldn't support the use of that.
At the beginning of this document, part of the preamble that Councilmember Lewis articulated. This, the purpose of it is for evaluation of the opportunity sites for the current housing element. You're not going to use this mid-year. You're not going to use it to make adjustments four or five years from now. But you may use it, to your point, Councilmember DeGoli, about eight years from now. And if the county has rezoned something adjacent to the town, you may look back at this criteria and say, okay, now how does this apply? Because now we're looking at changes going forward.
I'm fine with leaving it out, I mean, it's, you know, we, you know. Okay.
So, hey.
We're gras-
Is it revised or?
Yes, it's being revised.
So we're, we're saying it is is adjacent to or across the street from existing. Existing commercial or retail development, i.e. restaurant, store, service industry and businesses. Then the next one is adjacent to or across from other existing. Residential multifamily or denser development or zoned or planned. Residential multifamily or denser development.
You can make the same revision here and just remove the word planned.
Councilmember DeGoli.
I would say.
Well, yeah, I take out planned and and I or denser means. If you're an R one A parcel and you're across the street from an R one B parcel. That R one B parcel is denser. So what that's saying is, well, then change the R one A parcel to make it denser. I don't agree with that at all. I I don't, I don't think we should have or denser in here. So what you're saying is that all those properties that are on Almond Roll. That are on the north side of Almond Roll should be subject to rezoning. Because they're across the street from smaller properties which are denser because there are one B.
Just say non-single family. We can say non-single family. The other comment I would like to make, if I may, is that. When you say planned, it could say existing or in progress, right? So if somebody's actually doing something, it's passed their planning commission and they're moving forward, the council has approved it. That's in progress, even though it's not built right today. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I comment on what Rick said? Again, the goal of this is not what we're going to use to make policy. So we're not going to say. Everything that's an R one B is now going to be coming our, that's not what the intention here. The intention is to come with criteria for future planning for our city. So if we're forced to make future planning, we have to do it rationally. So this is not about that. It's about coming up with criteria. So. It's, this is not a how we're going to do to change our laws. I just want to remind us what we're doing here because it it gets scary if it sounds like what we're doing is. We're saying this is what's going to happen. We're not saying that. We're saying we have to have criteria and it has to meet a a number of these. So half the houses will fall off based on what's here and only a few will be left. So when we go through that process, we're going to find if we're forced to develop, where should we do it? In a lot logical way, that's not based on who's got the loudest voice or what other criteria that, you know, political pressure is based on. Criteria of how we should develop our city going forward.
I I agree with what Councilmember.
It's not future, the future, it's future in one month. It's not, it it it's future right now. We're doing this right now to deal with this housing element that's right in front of us. And probably this housing element is going to be in front of us for another year. So. It may be ten months, but it's not going to be, but we're not talking about some point in the future that's not within reach. It's right now, we're dealing with it.
I'm going to get a T-shirt if it's here all year, I'll tell you what.
Well, I think what we're trying to do is. Create something that we can potentially include in our housing element. To say this is kind of how we're going to try to address these issues. Without, you know, mandating and overlaying things right now.
Can I say something?
That, yeah.
Yeah, so I. I think this is not the focus for what to do in the housing element. I mean, I understand what Diana said. Where that in terms of developing criteria for looking at what what we're going to reconsider for zoning. I I think it's valuable to do that, but the critical thing in the housing element is we need analysis. I mean, if you read the HCD letter, it's ninety percent that our analysis fails. That was the same as the first letter. And the 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 housing element wasn't dramatically improved in terms of addressing the analysis requirements that they have. So that's where we fail. It's not about not having sufficient criteria to decide where to focus in terms of rezoning. It's that the analysis is inept.
Well, if I remember right, I I thought that they said that doing Oakwood was fine, but we needed more. So let's.
So, okay. It has readily available access to infrastructure and utilities. That's pretty broad.
What was the change?
Oh, the change, we're just taking out or planned. And I don't think we're putting in or in progress, which the mayor wanted to do.
Okay, there was also a comment about denser.
Oh, or denser. I I struck that out also.
Non-single family.
That's multifamily.
Residential multifamily and development. And denser is kind of a nebulous word anyway. It's kind of, you know, on. Yeah, okay.
Do you change denser too?
Uh, we just took it out. Just residential multifamily, other existing, other existing residential multifamily development. Next point is it has readily available access to infrastructure and utilities.
Any place in Atherton that does not? Why is that even in there? Are there, I'm asking sincerely, are there places that we don't have access to infrastructure and utility? Is there like a farm way up on?
Well, there, one of the questions that's come up several times is, well, is there enough water pressure there? Is there enough sewage capacity there, etc.? And so that would be part of their sequo analysis.
It it would be, but you're correct, Vice Mayor, that most properties have readily available access to utility infrastructure. That's not an issue. But there may be some that are undeveloped parcels. Or some areas of perhaps Bear Gulch eventually subdivides and they don't have access to utilities at that particular property.
I don't see why that this is relevant. I don't know why it's.
I think it's.
And it would be part of any sequo analysis.
Yeah.
Can I ask if someone is applying and they don't have the infrastructure and utilities, would they?
They're required to.
Like, wouldn't that automatically disqualify them or they would have to put it in themselves?
It would, so if it's an actual submitted application and they're going through a process, they would be required to to mitigate that.
At their cost, not the town's cost.
That's correct.
So can I ask a question then? For example, on one of our earlier things, we had some properties at Bear Gulch that were taken out. That, but at one point we were talking about doing development up there. Would that fall under this? Would that be an area that doesn't have existing infrastructure? And so we would eliminate that from future consideration?
It it could be, but again, this is just your planning tool for looking at it.
Understand what it applies to.
Right, some might have a comment.
Wanted to let the council know that as part of the housing element and the the site's evaluation, we will have to look at overall sewer and water capacity. So we will be doing that analysis anyway.
Do you want to take that out then? What would you recommend we leave it in a criteria?
Yes, because it's one of the HCD criteria anyway.
Okay.
There you go.
I think that's.
Okay, settled. Let's move on.
So what do we do with?
We're just leaving it in because it's part of the.
Can I make a comment then?
Sure, go ahead.
And when I talked to George about this, he suggested changing the language because I said, well, what are we talking about in terms of infrastructure? It's very vague. And he suggested changing the language to utility infrastructure.
Readily available access to utility infrastructure.
Yeah, infrastructure will be, do you have your skeleton?
Right, I like. If if I can just provide a little bit of context to this, so when HCD is looking at housing elements. And Atherton is in a unique position, but they're looking at housing elements from all sorts of jurisdictions. And when they're looking at projects and when cities are providing justifications for how they've allocated their Rena allocations. And where they have zoned properties, sometimes there's jurisdictions where they are, you know. There's rural properties where they don't have roads, they don't have utilities, and so that element is extremely relevant, right? So infrastructure is not just utilities, it's also roads and other features. That's why that word is in there. We are fortunate enough to have roads. We are fortunate enough to have water and power and things like that, but I just wanted to give you that context.
You know, that's very good perspective on that because I have read that some applicants have, you know, zoned. Or said that they were developing all over the place and, you know, like even over water. And there was just no way that the town could develop housing in that area. So, so we're going to leave it as it is. Infrastructure and utilities, okay. Okay, does not present a need to mitigate existing environmental hazards. Seems reasonable, if you got a. No, like.
Not being built on a toxic dump such as at the corpyard.
Would it be a fire district or anything?
Well, for example, on the fire district property, we don't exactly know what has been on that particular property and if they chose to move their firehouse. To the adjacent vacant residential lot and then, I know they're not, but and then do something different with their other site. It might need to be mitigated for environmental issues.
Go on.
Any other questions? Okay. Allows for the implementation of objective privacy buffers relative to adjacent properties. Such as setbacks, height limitations, landscape screening, fencing and ingress and egress. I think the intent there was. That if it was a congested cul-de-sac one way in, one way out, and part of it was going to be developed. That the new development would have to create new ingress and egress and it wouldn't go into that. One way, one way out cul-de-sac, whatever. That kind of a thing that, and that to the extent possible. The objective would be to protect surrounding neighbors from any visual. from any visual impact and additional traffic impact to um that individual property owner.
And this one would be largely informed by the objective design standards you eventually develop.
Right.
Any questions?
No, go on.
Uh, it would have, have to include a letter of interest from the existing property owner in support of the proposed development. And I guess you could expand and say either by the existing resident or, you know, uh, if they want to hire a developer to uh develop their property. Um, and it's to make sure that everyone knows that it's only if the existing property owner wants to do it.
Okay, move on.
Okay, uh, it presents an opportunity for a cluster of multi-family development. What does that mean?
So the intent of the subcommittee was this, of this one was that lot was large enough to allow a some, some significant multifamily development to occur on it. Or it was part of a smaller subdivision of the town where more than one lot could be consolidated into a cluster of multifamily development. And again, these were developed as eight criteria and you didn't have to meet them all.
Right, exactly. So that would be, yeah. Okay.
Okay. I was done through it all, yeah, yes.
I want to comment on this. I mean, who in the world wants Atherton to encourage the cluster of multifamily developments? I mean, this, the, then, you know, there's other cities uh to move to. I, I don't think this should be in here at all. I think this is exactly the wrong thing for us to be encouraging in Atherton. I think that what we need to encourage in Atherton, we have a real need in Atherton for people that work on our properties and people that work in our schools to be able to get affordable housing. We need affordable housing. We don't need clusters of multifamily development. We need affordable housing. So I would take this item off entirely.
Yeah, I can understand.
I think there's two things that George said that are different. There's the huge lots doing multi-family development clusters. And then there's also the concept of maybe combining lots. Which I feel like are two very separate things. If you combine a few small lots, then you're going to have one multifamily. So I guess, I don't totally, I agree with what Rick said, that I don't know that we necessarily want to create a you know, like a separate neighborhood within Atherton that has all the density in one area. Um, but I do think maybe there's something in here about lot consolidation that we should be considering. Given that a lot of this criteria is basically putting it in a lot of the R one B or whatever, smaller lots anyways.
Maybe the word cluster should be removed, but the opportunity for multifamily development. I don't think we were ever intending that there would be, you know, groups of sixteen homes i- in an area. Where we, we were just saying how to be able to support the opportunity for development of multifamily. A multifamily area. So that would be, it could be multiple condos that are two-story. It could be um, you know, one home that you go into one door and then there are uh, different apartments that are off that, you know, it could be a lot of things, but it wouldn't be a cluster of those, but I think.
The definition of a cluster is kind of uh, uh, not clearly understood or defined.
And, yeah. So, George, what do you say about that?
You can certainly remove the word cluster, presents an opportunity for multifamily development, but that again is kind of what you're actually doing with.
That's what this whole thing is. It's, I think, yeah.
Entirely, you're down to seven, then five, seven or something like that.
Rick?
Yeah, but it should be six of seven, not five of seven. I mean, the, the big issue is getting a letter from somebody who owns the property and whether they want to do it or not.
Right.
And that's always the big issue. And, and this is creating some criteria for where that might be. But.
So we're going to delete the last bullet point.
Yeah, make it five of seven.
That's fine.
Six of seven.
Anyway, and I guess, I don't perceive this document, and maybe I'm wrong, uh, as trying to encourage um the development. Uh, which you stated that, you know, you didn't want uh the encouragement of a cluster of multifamily. Um, I look at it as, you know, kind of maybe giving council and planning staff in the town um, some guidelines to evaluate if, you know, somebody comes uh, and says that they want to develop multifamily, um, like up, way up on the hills of, uh, you know, off Valamita. And it's not within a quarter mile of any multi, multi-modal, you know, it doesn't meet any of these requirements. But, so this gives us a tool to say, you know, we can't accept your application to do that. I, I don't know.
Well, it wouldn't be staff accepting the application. It would be, these criteria are going to be used by the council as we go through the housing element process and think about opportunity sites that might be identified for inclusion in the housing element as potential multifamily, or some other sort of development that satisfies state's requirements.
Okay.
Now we're going to open up to.
Yes, now we're going to have open uh, public comments. Uh, did we collect cards or what are we doing? Just letting people pick up their hand? Excuse me?
I didn't receive any speaker cards.
No one turned in a card. So, okay, we'll start with you. You've been here for a long time and this is your second meeting for a long time. And you've got your shirt on, so. So it's a two-minute time limit, okay?
Okay, I'm Pam Silveroli. I live at ninety-nine Gresham Lane. And um, I appreciate this criteria. It's something I think we can work with. What I find is missing is criteria for lot size. And why I ask that is my lot is point three acre. But yet I would pretty much be, I would fall within the criteria to rezone my home. Um, if this is the way it is. I think you're missing size. And that's, that's everything for me. I am not going to sell my home. I'm not, my neighbors are not selling their home. There is not an opportunity for my little small piece of land to be developed. And yet I feel unfairly being put into a mix that I don't belong. And to rezone my little piece of land. Um, as you all know, devalues property, creates problems with opportunity down the road and legacy for kids and whatnot. So I would really encourage you take a better look at lot size and tighten that up because right now it really, um, I'm feeling very targeted. I'm feeling very, very targeted by this, although I find it helpful. But I don't feel like, even though six out of these eight or however many it nets to, I would, I have a bullseye on my back.
Well, are you planning on putting your house up? I mean, that's, that's the thing. It says people bring these opportunities to us and we evaluate whether or not we want to go forward with those.
It's a discussion, I understand, but I think you're missing lot size.
Okay, George, you're going to take a note of these things so we can then have another meeting and discuss them?
I mean.
Okay, alright.
Also, Elizabeth brought up, she started the whole show with acreage and one acre lots. And I'm clearly not even that.
Yes, we understand. Thank you very much. And thank you for coming to your second meeting and sitting through another long meeting. Well, the second meeting with your shirt on. Yeah. Yeah, I do, I do. And you get, you know, gets people in the, in the, you know, on the picture head of the almanac and everything. Okay, next. Thank you.
Hi, Rod Shepard again. Um, thank you for again, taking the time to be thoughtful about this. I think I come at this particular document a little different than you. I thought it was a way to get the community behind the council. And I thought you were going to take it out to the community and maybe get some great ideas like you just got from here. And so my suggestion wasn't to get past input, but to get future input um, from uh, the community on these guidelines so that you don't have people clamoring and protesting your decision. So that, that, that was uh, one of my thoughts. Uh, then uh, multimodal uh transportation, I have no idea what that means. So I think you need to define it if you're going to put it in there. Um, and then as to the high transit corridor, I do think Mona talked, touched on it, but I, I think it's a very specific definition of fifteen-minute bus trips. And without the fifteen-minute bus trips, it is not a high transit corridor, it does not qualify. So that's how their materials need to come out of that as well. The other thing I learned, um, I think thanks to uh, the mayor was that the um, uh, there was just a court case decided two weeks ago. Um, and a very significant one as it relates to um, everything we're going to be doing for the housing element. And so our knowledge, my knowledge is, is constantly changing. So this court case is called Martinez versus City of Clovis. And in that court case, basically Clovis was held responsible for not having minimum density requirements on their site. So where the town has told us that we could overlay a zoning and have twenty per acre and then go back to single family, the court just said you can't do that. So once you go twenty per acre, and Mona can, can sort of adj- uh, address it if she needs to later on. But once you go to twenty per acre, the minimum you go to is sixteen per acre under this court case. So you got to be real careful on what you up. Because you can't go back and you're going to take somebody out of their house because they can't be single family home when it burns down, where they go to rebuild it. So I, I just put it out there um, as one of those major things in our changing environment as we learn this very complicated law for you guys to pay close attention to and help explain to us citizens.
Okay.
On how, how uh, we're going to deal with it.
Can you summarize the rest because we're on it?
Last thing is I request that the staff, actually, anybody who comes to the um, town asking for this higher density zoning, they explain that they lose the right to their single family uh, option. If they are granted the higher density, so.
Okay.
I think that need conversation will stop some of these applications or inquiries that you've already had. If they realize they have no, no uh, way to return to their single family. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question about.
About what?
About what?
We're asking a question of the, of a public.
Maybe I shouldn't have.
Um, so please try to stay within the two-minute wo- period. We have a lot of people here. And so when Francesca says, hey, you're, you're there, wrap it up, please. Thank you. Go on.
Hi, I'm Lori Shepherd. I live on Walsh Road. Do I have three minutes or two minutes? Or three minutes?
Two minutes.
Um, all right, well, let me, let me talk a little bit more broad strokes because I think the discussion tonight, I, I appreciate what's being said, but it's really built on a false premise because, and I think um, it's been brought up tonight. Can we put back up the, the, the little list for me? Can someone put the list back up? Woven throughout here is the concept of coming up with ways to rationalize multifamily development. And that's a false premise in my mind. We have an obligation to come up with our three hundred and forty-eight units. There is nothing that obligates us to put that into a multifamily configuration. And I'm going to tell you that within this community, and I understand where people are feeling pressure, things like that. It's not easy. We, we appreciate that. But anything that in any way encourages or allows multifamily, you've got a community that is a hundred percent against that. There, there is not one person in this town that I have ever come across that is in favor of that. And that's where you're going to feel pressure. It's not from HCD. It's going to be from the community. And so I'd like to take a step back be, fro- from that. We're, we're going through all of these uh gymnastics over something that people will lay down to prevent. I, I'm just, and it's a, it's a dangerous direction. It makes me nervous when I hear someone say, everything's on the table. I don't want to hear that. That's, that's not where we want to go. And, and just again, we understand it's hard. We understand that you feel as though you're trying your best. We, this is the time we need you to stiffen and we really, really need you to fight for us. If you guys won't, then you put us in a very precarious position. So again, the multifamily is a non-starter from my perspective, I think from the community's perspective.
Thank you. No, we're not commenting on public comments. Thank you. Yes, come on up. Carol, you don't need to introduce yourself again. We already know who you are.
Extensively to myself, when I hear things like cluster of houses.
We took that out. All right, start your two minutes.
Two minutes. Um, some additional wording. This is not glorious wording, thoughts off the top of my head, but some additional thoughts. Does not create significant additional traffic congestion or result in public safety hazards. Um, does not adversely impact or infringe on residents of adjacent municipalities. I E forty-one houses in Menlo Park and Long Valparaiso, houses in Woodside that are up the hill. You're dead right about fifteen minutes on the bus because I read that a month ago and said, aha, isn't that interesting? Because the Valparaiso bus does not qualify. Um, one comment, you don't have to designate an entire street. And so those of us who uh would be impacted by Valparaiso in particular are not opposed to part of Valparaiso down uh closer to the commercial area. So I think it is possible to do part of the street. Um, I'll leave it at that except to comment on the previous speaker. You need a backup plan. When the housing powers that be don't approve this, which they never will, what's the backup plan? I think you better think about litigation. Thank you.
Thanks. Litigation. Next. Are there any other public comments? Jeff, are you going to speak? All right, why don't we go to somebody online and we'll come back to Jeff, when, and if he's ready.
Yeah, I have one person named Mike.
Okay, Mike Child.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, very well.
Thank you, Bill and Elizabeth. Um, I just want to say, I, I was incredibly disappointed by your efforts, both of your efforts in putting forth a plan that put over seventy percent of the town at jeopardy. And I don't think that should have ever been presented. I think you should be focusing on answering the questions that are out there right now from HCD. We have a plan in place that you guys have already approved. And we should be supporting that plan, not undercutting our efforts by trying to look at where to put multifamily housing dilly-dally across the town. This is ridiculous. And I'd also say, if you guys are not comfortable fighting for us, you should step down and get people on the council who will do what the citizens want. And the citizens have been very clear in telling you what we want. And it's not to put a bunch of criteria that says seventy percent of the town can be developed with multifamily. So please, do your work for the citizens. You know what we want. We will back you up. We've told you that. And if it involves litigation, this is an illegal push by the state, which will eventually be overturned. You need to continue to fight it. Listen to Rick. Thank you.
Thank you, but I, I don't agree with your comments, Mike, as I wrote to you back. Alright, next. Jeff, are you saying anything?
Thank you, Jeff Morris fifty-five Elena. I've had a lot of conversations with uh, many of you and as Mike and Ron and Rory and a lot of us, we're disappointed in the subcommittee's recommendation. It's your recommendation, the two of you did it with George, okay? It makes absolutely no sense. You, you covered sixty to seventy percent of the town with the criteria you laid out. So obviously it wasn't where. You, you covered sixty to seventy percent of the town with the criteria you laid out. So obviously it wasn't where it was all thought out. So whatever we do, needs to be, have a map, you need to draw lines on where we're talking about. And the criteria should not be, well, if it hits five or si- six of eight or two-thirds, and those don't even add up, because six of eight, you know, not two-thirds. Uh we need to show everyone on a map, so this whole town does not have to continually worry about our city council making a mistake that jeopardizes communities. So whether it's a quarter of a mile or a half mile, you're only gonna know what the distance is gonna be by putting a highlighter on a map. And if it's on El Camino Real, then just be real clear, El Camino Real only. Um but let everybody in town worry about what, what you guys are gonna do next. We're all having to mon- monitor all these meetings, cause we don't trust you anymore. We really don't. You betrayed our trust by coming, by presenting this to us. And it's really upsetting to a lot of people. And as far as like being adjacent to multifamily, so take ninety-seven Santiago, which Bill, you showed me was gonna be on your presentation tonight. So if someone gets approved in ninety-seven Santiago, then the next lot over is adjacent. The lot across the street is adjacent. So then you're gonna have creep down all these streets. Once you approve one project, your criteria allows a lot of creep.
I don't think so.
Residents don't want this, okay? So I think, as Rod said, go on the community, get input from a lot of people. Don't just listen us, but figure out what makes sense for Atherton. We have plenty of time. This housing model's not gonna get done in twenty twenty-three. It's just not gonna happen. George has got fifty-three analysis to do, present to the state again. I, I counted them, I mean in this letter, there's fifty-three sets.
Okay, can you wrap it up, Jeff?
There's so much work to do before we even worry about all the criteria.
Thanks. Anybody else have a comment? Yes, Wally.
Walter Sleep. I am not an expert in housing, but it strikes me from listening to all this. I don't think the state or the nation has the right to do this to the individuals in a community. And for my part, I'm willing to back you guys up if you litigate this with the state. I, I think that's where this is gonna end up, and I think that's where it should end up. Now, you could get a class action with some other communities that are kinda similar to the way we are. I mean, I, I don't know how Los Gatos is, Saratoga, and some of the other places. We're not the only place. I know we probably have the most expensive housing in, in the country. But we're not the only town that has already been developed and doesn't want to have new development come in. So I really strongly suggest, as this one speaker, I don't wanna be, you know, you've done the best. I was impressed with many of you in your comments and how you did this. But there's another way to do this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Wally. Anybody else have a comment? How about online then? Anybody else online? Well, we had his comment. Okay, well then we're gonna close.
That must be a mistake.
Excuse me?
And he said he must have accidentally raised his hand.
Okay, no problem. Alright, so we're gonna close public comments on this item. Okay, there was no action required other than this discussion by the council. There's been nothing approved. And so, that's it. Okay, so we're going to move on. Thank you.
So I'll make those changes.
And then we'll look at it again. Right, okay. Sure.
I just wanted to say that the intent of what this was, was not to make it broad. So I heard two people say that if you go through these criteria at seventy or sixty percent, it, the intent was literally the opposite. Meaning that we're cutting down the places that could be on the list. So you're right, we should put it on a map, and we should actually go by the criteria and see what happens. And we should do it in a public venue with residents. I totally agree with that.
Which we are doing.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. Yes, go ahead.
So, just for me as a closing comment, I, I think it's fine we addressed this criteria. But I think the real issue is the analysis behind what we can do as Atherton to get affordable housing available. And we have certified a plan that we believe uh validly addresses how, what we can do to get sufficient affordable housing available. I think that's a good plan. It doesn't have the level of analysis that the state requires, and the state can't judge what we're proposing without that analysis. And the demands for analysis are enormous. I mean, this town has already spent or budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for this. That is so far in excess of anything that we've done, that this just underscores the comment about how the state is out of control on this issue. And it's not just for Atherton. This is for every community in California. Everybody's doing it. And uh the, the communities in Southern California and Orange County and LA County, their comp- our compliance date was January thirty-first this year. Their compliance date was October fifteenth nineteen uh twenty twenty-one. So they're a year and a half after their ob- their obligated compliance date, and more than half of them aren't in compliance. This is a marathon. This is gonna take a long time. And just imagine, with all of those communities not in compliance, the state uh bureaucrats who are in the HCD and commenting on all these letters, they're commenting on the sixtieth day because they're completely underwater. They're, this is gonna take a long time. And I think we've gotta get the analysis right. And if we get the analysis right, I think the analysis is gonna underscore the proposal that we've made. But we've gotta have that analysis right, so we can properly explain it to the state.
Here, here.
I'll make one comment myself. Everybody on this council up here has been working very hard on this with multiple many, many meetings with taking public comments. We are trying to come up with something so we don't continue to get the threat of builders remedies, which we cannot control. And so it is incumbent upon us, as Rick indicated, to continue to make progress with HCD, not to just kick sand in their face. And so that's what we're trying to do. We're all working very hard and are more tired than you are of looking into this. But as you read in the Almanac, there are people talking about uh builder's remedy. And so, you know, it could happen anywhere. And so you need to recognize that. And the longer we delay on making progress so that we would have some defense is, you know, just increasing the uh uh the opportunity for something like that to happen. So that's my final comment, unless you wanna say something. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanna talk about Menlo College.
Oh yeah, I, I'll say something about Menlo College. I'd love to, since I mentioned it. Many people have told me how they're raising money to hire, you know, to get lawyers to fight everything. Menlo College has said in our housing plan in a letter that, yes, they're willing to build sixty or sixty apartment complex, but they have no money and they have no intention of raising money for the foreseeable future. So when you look at that letter and your HCD, what number do you think they put down is highly probable? Zero. Okay, so we need to get behind the plans that we're saying we're gonna put, okay? So that's it for me. Thank you. Let's move on. Okay, next.
Item number nine.
Thank you. Discuss and decide on the installation of electric vehicle charging units in Holbrook Palmer Park through PCE's EV Ready program.
Thank you. I'll introduce this item. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm excited to share the three charging evaluation reports from Peninsula Clean Energy that were developed as a part of their EV Ready program last spring. Um we've had a chance to review the three sites in Holbrook Palmer Park, and just wanted to share the options with the council. So you could decide what, if any, sites you would like for us to pursue. The next steps, if you were to select a site, we would um go out to bid for this, um and then select a contractor, finalize the design, do the install, and, and set our pricing policy. So this decision would kind of set us forth on that trajectory for um getting these chargers installed. So the first location, this was the most cost-effective location and kind of the, what we asked for location in terms of number of chargers and location, is at the entry lot to Holbrook Palmer Park. Uh this would include four Level Two ports. Um so essentially four parking spaces with EV charging ports. Um and PCE would give us twenty thousand dollars in rebates for this. Um and the net cost to the town would be twenty-four thousand dollars. So we would need to set aside that funding. Location two would be the main house, um and they deemed it feasible to do two Level Two ports there. Um and that would result in a ten thousand dollar rebate to the town um for a total net cost of twenty-three, twenty-three thousand dollars. And then the third location is Jennings Pavilion. Uh four Level Two ports would be feasible there. PCE would cover twenty thousand dollars of that project, leaving thirty thousand for the town to cover. So we have this opportunity with PCE to get five thousand dollars per port. If you did that math quickly. Um their program is getting subscribed. They don't have a timeline for when they'll run out of fund. So I don't wanna say there's a super big urgency, but we do wanna um kind of commit whether we wanna choose one of these locations or just um, you know, decide not to install chargers. This is, this is probably the best time as far as funding goes. So I'll leave that there, and I'm happy to answer questions about what the charging stations could look like or um go into any of the details from the charging evaluation reports.
Go ahead.
So ha- has the um Park and Rec Commission taken a look at this?
I don't, I don't believe so. They haven't.
No.
Have an opinion?
EV charging opined by the.
Just all us. I mean, I ju- you know, they have a preference, you know, where I mean, I, I assume we can't do them all, right?
We could.
We could do them all. It'd be seventy-seven thousand dollars if we did them all.
Let's, let's go through them item by item and then see if we decide to pare them down, and then we can decide if we wanna do them all.
A- additionally with these, um I'll add, we could kind of augment the number of chargers if we wanted to add more or if we wanted to add some kind of make-ready infrastructure, um we could do that to get a little bit more cost effectiveness.
Diana.
Are these chargers similar to the ones we have out here?
Exactly.
The same, so they're not the ones with the solar that are self-contained? They're like this right here? Would we use the same vendor too?
Likely, but we would go out to bid.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. Uh so the cost difference per charger is quite a bit different. Um I'm assuming some of that is that the most expensive ones per charger are where you're doing two ports rather than four ports. But I also assume that uh it's proximity to elec- electricity and, and the more uh you have to dig into the ground and lay cable, then the more expensive it's gonna be. And, and i- is the per port charging at the main house as compared to the Jennings Pavilion, because I know that the one at the entry lot is close to a an electricity connection, whi- which we had used for the temporary buildings. Um why, why is that one so much more? Is there just not access to uh the electricity as easily at the main house uh parking lot as there is at the pavilion?
That's my understanding. It's my understanding the entry lot was built uh properly, like sized for the, it was kind of like make-ready um after the portables were moved, um with the intention to put chargers there. Um so.
And when you look at the map, it shows, it's, but, but that's not my question. My question's about the pavilion versus the main house. The main house is almost twice as expensive.
You have to trench from the main house to the water tower for the electrical panel for those.
I see. So it's the, so the panels at the water tower?
Yeah.
And it, it's that that trenching is longer than the trenching you'd have to do from the location in the pavilion.
Correct. I, I think it's also that economy of adding the chargers, because the power for the pavilion lot would be from near the play school. From near the play school is where the power for the pavilion lot is. And so it's that economy if you're on the per port charge, a large chunk is bringing the power to each location.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
Um I have a question. I don't know if one of you guys can answer it. Um I can see the advantage of putting a lot of them in, and you know I'm pro-electric. But my question is, if we just do some now, can we expect there to be great improvements? So let's say we go all in and we wire, we put them all in and we spend this money, and then two or three years from now, you know, the next generation's out and it's more efficient and cheaper and all that. So does anyone have a feeling for that, or has our, have we talked to consultants on this that have recommendations or?
I, I can share that the least expensive part of the charger is the actual charging port. The expense is gonna be in the infrastructure to get there, and everything which we would have to do, no matter what.
Yeah, go ahead, Stacy.
Well, you can answer, and then I'll ask you a question as well.
Okay. Um each of the meter locations have capacity limitations. And so, for example, you can't put a DC fast charger at the pu- at the main house lot. There's not enough power at the water tower to support that. There is enough power to support uh the Level Two charging that's being proposed. Uh the only one that has the potential of a DC fast charge is the front lot, the entry lot, where we had our large service that we put in for the portables. And so we can't, I mean, there is an opportunity, but those fast chargers are really expensive.
Let me ask a call of question on that and practicality. If you put a fast charger, and I guess I don't know the time difference, but let's say I can go there and charge my car in five minutes, as opposed to someone can go and charge for two hours and you're tying up that spot for two hours, and who's gonna be there for two hours? Has anyone done the analysis to see what's actually more practical? Are we better off paying for one fast charger that can be rotated quickly?
I don't think you can charge your car for five minutes.
I, I can share the um.
Well, it's the time difference.
Yes, PCE did the analysis, and that's basically the recommendation was the Level Two charging.
That's what PCE recommends?
I would agree with what PCE said. I mean, that, that makes a lot of sense. I don't think we should second-guess them at this point.
I can share charging averages if that's helpful. With Level Two, you'll get a hundred miles in about four hours. In Level Three, you'll get a hundred miles in forty minutes. But we're not, it's, it's not near someplace where folks are gonna need to like kind of charge overnight or anything. They're just gonna charge while visiting the car.
Okay. Stacy?
Um kind of along the lines of Diana's question, I think, you know, there's gonna be more and more EVs on the road. So, you know, maybe ten years down the line, we're gonna wanna add more chargers. Is this potentially gonna set us up to have cheaper installations for future additional EV chargers? Like if we added, if we wanted to add to the entry, we have four in this proposal, and in five years we wanna add four more. Would that process be cheaper?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hedge what I say.
Okay.
Uh again, there's limitations with each of the meter locations, and so there is going to be a cap on what you can put in. Um and so that being said, is that um I think uh PCE provided some additional options for what they call make-ready. And so that is making ready for another future install. That's gonna cost a little more than what uh what's listed in the report for actually putting the, those set number of chargers in. And so we, we can do that. I mean, the conduits are gonna be in the ground. You know, particularly, let's say like, for example, from the meter on the Watkins side of the exit drive uh across the driveway over to the parking lot, that'll be in there. So it's a matter of kind of restringing cable and expanding the capacity there. So in the future, you always have the option of saying, you know what, we want more. So even here at the town hall, we can expand. I mean, it's not gonna be as simple as just plopping it in the ground, but we have the ability to expand, and you'll have the ability to expand in the future as well.
Well, yeah, we can easily ask PCE to tell us the cost of the make-ready. They said they'd be happy to have, open up our report again and do that.
Any comments from, questions or comments from the public? Okay, come back to council for comments, yes, Rick.
Uh so we have four chargers right now here at the town center, right? Two over in this lot and two in that lot right over there. Um and I think they get used, but they're not heavily used, it's not like people are lined up for them, that's for sure. Uh I've never had a problem getting onto a charger here and and I've used them and there, I find them convenient. Uh I think putting chargers in the park is the right thing. Uh I, when I look at the costs, it ca- given, I a- and I looked at all the detail. And and I, I think what Robert said, if you didn't pick up on it, is that you got to have an electrical panel that you access. To hook the pan- the chargers up to and that the panel that's at the water tower, which is what would serve the main house lot. Has got less capacity than the panel for the front of the park and the panel at the Pavilion. So that's why we could only do uh two ports uh and in the main house and and that's very clear in the staff report, it comes through very clearly. Um given the ca- and and we'd be, this is, this would be putting in ten chargers in the park. Which I'm quite sure will be quite unused. Um because we've got four here and and they get used, but they're not very used. Now, I do think that they're going to be more used as time passes, because there's going to be more and more EVs. That members of our community drive and they're going to want to charge them, so. I I guess uh where I'd come down is I'd probably put in the eight chargers in the park for the two units that have four panels each. Um because they're six and seventy five hundred dollars each versus eleven thousand five hundred for the, the main house. Um I, I do think that there's. Potential both here and at the park for change once, if we put in solar. Uh on the Pavilion and, you know, I don't know, on uh. Uh parking structures, whatever, uh at some point we may decide it makes sense to put in. Uh solar and that may change the dynamic in terms of uh putting in chargers. And and you know, there's this whole DC to charging versus AC to charging uh infrastructure. Which none of our chargers use, uh but technology is going to change in the next ten years. So I guess I feel pretty comfortable that eight chargers in the park is going to be sufficient for quite a period of time. I mean, that judgment could be wrong, but that's sort of where I come out.
Okay, so my comment is when we first look at this, we, the council voted to put one charger. In the park, so this is quite a change. Um I'm sure that we need more than one, because times have changed. However, I don't think we need two at the main house at this point in time. Uh if you look at the parking lot, for example, on a Saturday when people are going to Little League games. They're driving from their home and their cars are already charged, nobody comes over here to charge their car at the par- at the park. Um I do think it's worthwhile at the entry lot to do the four. And I think it's worthwhile at, uh you know, at the Jennings Pavilion to do four. And I would like to recommend that we consider just starting with that. Uh we can always add later, um we can expand later, we can go to, you know, higher. Charging capability later, but um you know, I think that, you know, taking up. Ten parking places in a park that's already pretty crowded on certain days is, is tough. And so, and these, these parking places can only be used by EV as well as handicapped. By state law, uh parking, and so um, you know. But the majority of the cars that are over there on Saturday to watch a Little League game are not that. So um I'm recommending four and four, or even two and four, but I, I can go with eight. Leave out the main house, that's my two cents.
I have a question, so uh on, on the ADA non-exclusive EV space. Does that mean it's structured for ADA? But it could be filled by a non-ADA car?
Correct.
So it's not the same as the blue zone spaces?
Exactly, yes, it just has the uh width and the passage, yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with eight.
And I'll also share that these chargers could enable um employees to transition to electric vehicles and could also enable our fleet. Um including PD to, to start electrifying.
So are the employees going to be driving over there and then walking over here? I mean, it'd be great if they did, that's a great physical fitness program, but we have four here already.
And I hope.
Purchase will be segways.
I think we go with eight, just, I, I'm recommending we go with the eight, leave out the main house at this point in time.
Was this an action item or direction?
We need motion.
I, I move we approve eight.
I second that. Let's take a vote.
Say all in favor?
You want to do that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there it goes, anybody know, anybody is a no? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Play structure.
Play structure is the next one, hold on for a second, let me get to the right page. Okay, next is approval of a place str- of place structure repairs at Holbrook Palmer Park Playground. Which are in need of that a- as well as expansion.
Well, thank you mayor, members of the council. Uh as noted in your report, during a routine inspection of the play structure uh for the older kids at the park. We found that the structural supports were significantly deteriorated. Um and uh we solicited proposals for uh replacement materials. Uh which are included in your staff report, um because of the members that need to be, the pieces that need to be replaced. The entire structure has to be taken down and reassembled. Um and so we got a price quotation from uh our playground person to get that done. Uh which is also included in your report. We will be looking forward to uh hopefully in upcoming budget, talking about the. Re- replacement and enhancement of the place structures at the park. But in the meantime, we think it's important to either A, repair and have safe structures for the children to play on. Uh or B, totally remove the structure for safety reasons, so kids aren't climbing on a piece of equipment that isn't safe. Our recommendation at this point in time is to repair the structure. So that we have something in the interim while we look at um redoing the play area. And so with that, we're looking for an allocation of sixty five thousand, a little over sixty five thousand dollars for it.
Okay, Diana.
I have a question, just by cursory looking on the internet, these same companies sell these same brand new. For about seventy thousand, so for five thousand more, if you're going to take the whole thing down and rebuild it with the old one. I think they're super important, I do think we should do it, but I'm wondering if we did the analysis on just at this point buying a new one and putting it in. Because you're putting an old thing back in for not much less than.
I'll agree with you that you can buy a play structure for about seventy grand, but you're going to be paying at least twice that much to put, put it in. And so your seventy thousand dollar structure is likely going to be in the two hundred thousand rate or hundred and uh. Hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollar range installed.
And do they come with warranties? Meaning that if you, if you put in, let's say we were to do that, would we have to not fix it again for a while? Because as it is, we're spending sixty five now, but committing that we're going to spend another si- you know, the month later to replace it anyway. I haven't seen no bad state they're in, but I'm wondering the cost effectiveness of taking this approach as opposed to just.
Well, it's also a matter of how long you want to ha- be without a structure, so if we are not going to repair it, the recommendation is that we remove it.
So if you purchase one, how long does it take to purchase one, they're, they're for sale, do you just purchase and they install them, the people you buy from?
We have to publicly bid them.
We have to bid it and uh knowing what we would likely do is we would engage the community. Through the Park and Rec Committee as to what the playgrounds would look like if we are replacing and putting in new structures. And so we, we can take one off the shelf, but I, I think that we want to get the community feedback as to the types of play structure. If we are going to replace, what kind of play structure we want, how we want it to look. We would likely also look at accessibility issues and maybe surfacing, conversations around surfacing. And so rebuilding the play area is li- I say. We would recommend a little more involved conversation with the community.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, as the, the probably the most frequent user of playgrounds in this council with a toddler. Um I, I agree with you that our playground, replacing it is a much bigger discussion, our. Playground is not as nice as any of our neighboring communities, and so for me, like. The playground is an essential thing that we have in our park, it's very well used, I meet a lot of Atherton people from hanging out at the playground. So I think whatever gets it back on the ground, working the faster is the best. And simultaneously, I wholeheartedly think we need to be reevaluating our playground for the future. Because it's not, it's not consistent with the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, there's going to be an expansion later, so that would be in a new, new structure.
So I think repairing it seems, seems like the fastest, cheapest option, so I'm.
When would we, when would we then consider the new one, I mean, what's the timeline?
George brings it to the council.
It's got a whole process that it would go through, Park and Rec Committee would be involved, as Robert mentioned, some community input into that process and design.
But, but we're, we're, we're looking at putting it into consideration for. We're, we're looking forward to bringing it forward for your consideration during the budget process, so that we allocate the funds to, to get that processed.
Elizabeth?
So if you uh re- do the repair, how long do you think that the repair will be good for?
It'll be good for a while.
Like a while meaning a year, two years?
The structural components that we are replacing will be good for years.
Years.
Years, yeah.
Like maybe five years?
Yeah, I say, I mean, if we, I mean, the, the wood is deteriorated.
Right.
At the bottom under the sand, we're looking at replacing the wood beams and posts.
Okay.
And so they are going to be new pieces, and so that part, those parts of the structure are going to last as long, basically as long as.
But the rest of the play structure will also, that will be reused, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh so we have a few other pieces.
And they, it's still good enough for another couple, three, five years.
I said, it, it'll last that long, but I don't think that the council's intent would be that it be there that long.
I see, okay.
Go ahead, Rick.
A question and a comment, uh in, in order to replace it, uh I mean, repair it right now. Could we get it done so that it's functional this summer?
With your approval, we're going to outreach to the parts supplier, uh either by the end of this week or beginning of next week. To put in the order for the parts, uh there is a, a lead time for that, in the meantime, we'll be engaging with. The installer to be ready when, when they come in. So our intent is that we're going to get it done as quickly as we can. As uh council member Holland mentioned, it's a heavily used area, we'd like to bring it back to public uses as soon as we can.
And it's completely taped off right now and kids are going to be all over it this summer, whether you repair it or not.
Yeah.
So.
Already.
I think it's critical that we get it done right away, and I, I think the, that the staff's judgment is the right one. I, I, I think, I, I also think that it, when you go around and look at other play structures, which I've done. Uh it's clear, our play structure doesn't match.
Right.
What is available in other communities, and our play structure was built one hundred percent with donations from parents. Quite some time ago.
Right.
I think we need to completely overhaul the entire play structure and really put in a, we, we have the funds in the town. We should put in a good play structure and we can take two years to do it. I mean, I don't think, uh i- if we're repairing this, what we repair is going to last for a while, it's still going to be a crappy. Uh play structure, so we, we need to do a good one. And, and there, there are really good play structures being built right now, we just have to decide to invest in it. And the community will totally embrace it once we do that, so. This is, it's a heavily used item in the park, I, I, I really think this is an important investment for us to do. And we should discuss it in CIP and we should allocate funds to get it done in the next couple of years.
As well as add, add to it, I get calls, I would say several times during the week about the play structure. So this is something that people want, they've been waiting for, they complaining about, and so we just need to move forward with this. And then when we expand it, we can possibly ex- you know, put the new one in and then also at the same time. As that one's in place, then we would do the other one in sequential, but I'm not telling you how to do your job. Okay, all right, thank you, a- uh any public comments on this? Yes, Wally? Yeah, I believe that that might, that might be what their plan is, these guys know what they're doing, thank you. All right, do we have a vote and a recommendation on this? Okay, are we going to approve it or not?
Let's approve it.
Make a motion please.
Motion to approve the expenditure to fix up the playground.
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the last one is, not the last one, but the.
It is the last.
Yeah.
It's a unanimous approval.
Excuse me?
I was just telling people on Zoom that it was a unanimous approval of item number ten.
Right, okay, item number eleven is award of the contract for the Atherton Rail Station Rehabilitation Project. Um uh project number fifty six two eighty five, thank you.
Uh thank you mayor, members of the council, um we brought forth before you um the design of the rehabilitation. Of the train station, um project was put out to bid, only one bid was received. Um and the base bid, the, we had a few additive alternates, as you know. Um as we walked through the project earlier, that included uh installation of a HVAC system. Uh rehabilitation of the signage outside as well as some work on the, on the clock. To repaint and rehab that. Um the base bid came in at three hundred and two thousand, which just falls within the budget that we had allocated for the project. Uh we have a, a grant in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars uh that was allocated towards the project. We spent about ninety six thousand for the design, so we have just over three hundred thousand available for construction. Uh we're recommending that we award the base bid only, uh which is within the budget. With an additional allocation from the council for contingencies in the event that we uh run into some unforeseen things.
But that doesn't cover the interior stuff that they were planning on doing, is that not correct?
It does not include any of the display materials or any of the memorabilia or any of the other features associated with.
Okay, so what, what I'd like to do is hear from the subcommittee first on this.
Well, I actually had a question.
Okay.
Pick up what you just said, be more specific, the drawings that we all had had the center cabinet.
It has the case.
Oh, the base bid does include the center case.
That's correct.
And all the electrical for the central case.
That's correct.
Okay.
It is not any of the.
Right, yeah, okay.
Display stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so Vice Mayor, why don't you start? Make your comment on this, please.
Just wanted to ask about that, I don't have a comment. I'm shocked at how high it was, but I've been advised that, that, that this is what it costs to do. I mean, it's about the size of someone's house, so, a small house, or their living room in Atherton. So the numbers are shocking to me, but I don't know how much this stuff costs, but um so.
You know, our option is that we um. We either reject the single bid that we have or that we move forward with this, this single bid. Which only one person bid on it, yeah, Rick.
So um I've been involved with, as we have, with quite a number of bids for small projects in this town. Uh we, uh it took a long time to get people to do the bathrooms at the Pavilion. We couldn't find anyone to do the bathrooms in the carriage house, they are still undone, we had budget for that last year. We had budget for that this year, we can't find anyone to do it, because it's too small a job for somebody to take on. Look at the trouble we had with the cafe. Look at the trouble we had with the cafe work, these small jobs, you just aren't gonna get very many people to bid on. And this is a small job, it's a three hundred thousand dollar job and maybe it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar job, I don't know, but. This is, we we've got somebody that will do the job, I, uh, the option for us is to leave the little. Train station gazebo the way it is and forget it, or to make it into something that's interesting and I think the. Train Museum idea is the most interesting thing, we can come up for this little tiny room that it is. And yeah, it's gonna cost us more money than we got from Caltrain in our four hundred thousand dollar negotiation with them. Over their insistence on shutting down the train and I think this is the best we could do, I think we should take the bid, we should get it built. And, um, the library has agreed to fund the video that we'll use in there for the history of the train. So that's a good thing, uh, there is gonna be some more cost, that's just the way it is, it's a small job and. I I I'd rather get it done.
Okay.
I support it.
I will say that people currently go and sit in it, so people actually just go there and sit. So in any case, we do need to make the thing safe and we should do all the things that are in building the structure. So that's another argument for actually building it, even if we didn't do it into a train museum, just to make it as a structure that's usable and safe for the public. And second, there may be interest in public funding for part of the museum parts of it and working with partners, so. I I think going forward, we should look at some of that as well.
Anything else from the rest of the council? You don't have to say anything.
Yeah, I mean, I think this this originated before I was on the council and so I'm looking at it where I'm like. Seems like a lot of money for a train museum that I don't know how much use it'll get. Uh, my toddler's super into trains, so I, there's a ton of train content in the area, so, um. You know, I was just like, we cheaped out on, and not cheaped out, but like, we opted not to do EV chargers by Jennings Pavilion. And I think this will cost more than those chargers and the chargers would have gotten more use in this museum, so I'm kinda. On the heels of that and I obviously voted for that, that was the right decision, I'm just kinda looking at this and the expense of it and kinda being like, this is. Who wants this, so although the the structure being in disrepair absolutely needs to get fixed up. And it's so, you know, I'm, I could go either way.
Well, my my opinion is that we, um, did get this four hundred thousand dollar, uh. Money from Caltrain and it will be put to good use, even though we're gonna go over budget with the train museum. I mean, honestly, um, if it weren't for, um, one of our wonderful residents, Carol Flaherty, helping, uh. Mademoiselle, she would not be doing her, um, build out right now. But because it is very, very expensive to get things done, so I think that, um, money out of the, uh, town's coffers. Is gonna be minimal, um, in the grand scheme of things and I think we should just, uh, go ahead and get it done. And I'm I'm all for, uh, going with this, uh, my only question is, is this contractor any good at all? I mean, I mean, are we, is he reliable? And, um, i- in the staff report, uh, you call fifty-six two eighty-five, is that the project number? Because in the narrative, it's, uh, fifty-six zero eighty-five, that's just the little typo.
Um, we did check a couple of references, um, the contractors done work for, um. Both Oakland and San Jose predominantly related to, uh. Affordable housing rental unit rehab.
Hmm.
And so they have, uh. They they got pretty good references.
References, yeah, we don't want them to start and then not be able to finish or whatever and it is a little different than. I don't know, income housing rehab, but.
Well, I say the fact, I mean, you look at those units and what is the work that's involved?
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's really, um, you know, we have a lot of wood repair that needs to be done.
Yes.
Um, little bit of roofing stuff, a lot of electrical work and so those kinds of facets really tie into this. Kind of thing.
Good supervision is, uh, the key here.
Well, the good thing is, is that it's right outside our.
Good, okay.
Our door.
Okay, are there any public comments? All right, I'll bring it back to council for final discussion and vote.
Like to make a.
I just had a question, I had a question long term on this, we keep encountering this issue that the bids that we're getting are over the top. Is there anything we can do to broaden the people who get our bids or who qualify to get? Is there anything we can do to either change our scope of who we consider or to get a broader reach? Because over and over, we're hearing the same thing and the bids seem to be so outrageous and I know it's Atherton and we all get, I've been doing it myself.
That's not it.
Is there anything we can do?
Well, I say, part of it is is scale, as, um, as one of the council members mentioned, the smaller the project, the less people you're gonna have.
Um, bundle projects, like if we have this project bundled with a different one?
It was.
Are there any creative ways to get more bids that are in line with what we think market?
Well, I'm gonna say that the estimate from the design team was this much and a little.
Yeah, no, that was shocking too, always.
So, as far as the bid compared to the estimate, it's pretty much in line with what that estimate was. Uh, with regards to outreach, um, we do look at, um. The type of work it is and we do outreach to those types of contractors. Um, to try and gain, try and gain interest, we solicit through, uh. The plan rooms, uh, that publish stuff, our stuff is available for free online, we don't charge for plan sets and that kind of thing. Um, and when we put things out, we do reach out to our consultants and say, are there contractors that we need to or should reach out to? And it's also important to remember that bidding on a public project is a different sort of contractor than a contractor that might be on a private project.
Yep.
Different requirements.
Okay, can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to award the contract for the Atherton Rail Station Rehabilitation Project, project number five-six-two-eight-five. To the, uh, Casio Plumbing Inc. of Hayward.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? You were on defense.
I mean, yeah, sure, let's do this thing, trains for everybody.
Okay, okay, number twelve. Do we want the Atherton Library Funds to pick up some of the cost of making the videos, hopefully this will be an easy one.
Thank you for the staff report, perfect.
All right, so are there any questions? Oh, any public comments about letting the Atherton Library pay for some of the work, oh, Wally? I can't believe you're asking a question.
Do we know who's gonna do the video?
We have several vendors, uh, they're.
The seven, okay, that that answers, yeah, thank you.
No problem, all right, bring it back to council, final comments and and or just a vote. I recommend that we accept the library's nice offer of of funding these videos.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you very much, are there any other public comments here at the end of the meeting? Cause this is open to public, yes?
Other public comments, but I just might wanna remind the Vice Mayor to make an oral report.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, yeah.
That fire district board meeting last night in which they talked about the twenty-five Ab- Abmondroll. Um, house and, uh, it was, they chose to unanimously make a motion saying that they wanna reiterate. They have, they wanna reserve that place to be used only for expanding the fire station and for fire uses. So it's kind of off the table for us, they also, um. Are already building and accelerate, uh, like, uh, some sort of dwelling, not a dwelling, it's a storage building in the back. They also wanted assault and that's in construction now and it's on the, the the L part of the flag lot. That's right behind the station, so it's actually under construction, it's approved and it's under construction. They also wanted us to know that.
Is it approved by ca- by our planning department or is it just approved by them?
Must be, they're doing it.
I don't know, we should find that out, yeah?
We can certainly look into it, but they are a separate special district.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
They wanted us to know that they've removed the green pool, cause they heard us commenting on the green pool in the backyard, that's been removed. So that's not there anymore and they said that in the future, even though they're iterating that they have no intention of using for anything other than the station. That, uh, they would consider making a subcommittee if we gave a specific proposal and there was a reason for them. So if we want anything to happen there, we have to go to them with a specific proposal and have them address it. But on their own, their composition is that it's for fire use only and not for every, they said it was never intended to be workforce housing.
Even though they're using it for that now.
They said they're not, there, it's not work, they're saying it's not workforce housing, it's being used for storage and parking. And the what they just built was storage, parking and equipment sort of stuff.
I debated, but, okay, all right, future agenda items from anybody? I see none, public comments, yes. This is, uh, public comments on items not on the agenda.
Last day tonight, say thank you. A lot of arrows were crossing back and forth, but you notice that none of us are voluntary to be on committees. None of us are running for city council. And you guys put in so much time, it's your life and I really appreciate it and we don't say it enough. And it's not reflected in these meetings.
Thank you.
But we really do appreciate, we don't always agree, we really appreciate.
All right, thank you, thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
All right.
It would be boring if you always agree.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Okay, all right, I have a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
All right, meeting's over.
See everyone tomorrow morning.
Yeah, tomorrow morning at eight o'clock.
Doing what?
Right here.